I'll change actors to read the second. Motion by John Floyd, accept. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Clifford? Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and last, the minutes of our last meeting, the sixth of February. Have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Just the bales, I don't think that's how you spell bales, but...
Excuse me, Gene?
I think it's on the first, second, uh, fourth paragraph down. Mount Holly bales are plastic. It's B-A-L-E, yes, instead of B-A-I-O-N, that's...
Oh, bales. Gets them out of trouble.
Okay, that correction's been made. Is there anything else?
So, it's, uh...
John?
I'll make a watchman.
Second by Clifford. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Okay. Questions on the floor? Not even Charlie?
I just wondered if there was any thought being given to maintenance of the monument outside there. I know it's easy to forget it, it's not such a big item, but however, we let it go too far, someday we'll have to replace it entirely, so I just wondered if some kind of a Band-Aid solution to fix up the spring before the water gets into the cracks and things like that. And maybe you could put a cap on how much you want to spend and really make a drive to see who would do it for that price or whatever.
Yeah, we had some cost figures, I believe, last year. It was like a nine hundred dollars or something like that. Basically, you know, dress it up and semi-restore it. You know, we were going to put in the budget and we did. I know, I forgot all about it.
That's why I probably held it up.
I think one thing that should be in the base should be raised up to go higher. The maze catches everything. We can get some cost estimates, Charlie. See how they...
Yeah, I don't mean to rebuild a thing, I mean just to prevent it from...
Some letters aren't showing anymore.
Not showing anymore, and there's quite a practice in the base. They have to plug with silicones or something. Just to keep it going for several more years. So change to let it go completely, then we have big trouble if we can't keep it.
I agree. Dick, can you, you and Joe?
Should we dig out those holes now?
Maybe I'll look.
Dig out those holes?
We might have the old holes, but I think we only got them from one individual.
Yeah.
And maybe we can get several other people to take a look at it, get some competitive bidding. Okay? Anything else, John?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, uh... No help report, no report from the building inspector. Road commissioner, any, anything from Marshall Fish?
Um, I took the end of the last five. Is the annual, um, well, it's my annual federal aid for bridges. Marshall's, um, he does, and said it's okay for the board to sign. The signatures are there.
Any other highway business?
No.
Uh...
Okay, well, under my file, I was going to bring this up, but I guess we can cover here. The annual certificate of highway mileage. This usually comes in, uh, January, and it didn't this year. And after all the dust has settled, I realized I didn't have it, so I called up last week and got a, you know, a duplicate copy. The deadline is February tenth. We're attempting to, you know, get Travis Harris, uh... All finally recorded and so forth. I don't know if we can get it in, she gave us a week or two, but... It needs your signatures anyway, even if we don't do anything, so... But we'll try to squeeze it. Incidentally, that, that measurement of mileage, uh, is down here. It all sugared off to a minus point one nine mile. Among the documentation. Well, we need your signature, but...
Different paper name?
Pardon?
You signed one paper?
Yeah, it's, oh, go through.
No, you haven't. You got the copy, got it.
Okay.
I know it's, it's further down the agenda, but seeing how we're discussing highway business, I'd like to deal with the stop sign situation. Mr. Chairman, where is Travis's place or whatever you just called him?
Travis Harris.
I've never heard of him. We have a new street.
I notified the...
They normally do.
Well, it's not, you don't have, yeah, as soon as they sign it.
Yeah, we don't have, it's not officially ours, so...
Where is it? Quarterway Road.
Quarterway, okay.
Is that the monument of Altman?
Yeah. Oh, okay. As soon as we have the deed, then you get... Okay, because we'll get called up then. What's up?
Yeah, so that's, that's where it is.
Thank you. Okay, getting back to what I was saying originally. I, I know it's further on the agenda tonight, but I'd like to deal with the stop sign situation under highways here. And I asked Joe to contact Marx Berry, the town attorney, to get us something we can adopt tonight so we can enforce the stop signs that are presently in the town. Maybe Joe would like to give us that up.
In, in your file there, Rod, you'll find the ordinance which the board would receive on your destiny when you came in. We just got the final version today. Essentially, it's not an ordinance, it's, there's special regulations, and it gives the sheriffs all the authority, they need your permission to our attorney to stop people, particularly if they go through the stop signs. You'll notice, um, only Rod has it on the final form there, a listing of all the stop signs in town. It's done a little differently than what you got in the mail.
Right, we did.
I changed it. Um, it's a little clearer this way, and there's approximately forty-seven or so locations in the town where there are stop signs. So what you would need to do according to Mark is a board member would either make a motion to approve those special regulations, and then second it, and then it will become effective immediately.
What kind of changes did you make, Joe?
The way I listed the rows in the back, John, I changed, I described it...
You wrote them out rather than agreed...
Yeah, if we get copies, we'll...
Yep. As soon as it's adopted, I was going to send the copy to the sheriff.
So if we adopt this tonight, we can force, which I always thought we could anyway, but this would give us more leverage to force the stop signs.
If we push an order, I make a motion to adopt.
Okay, or we won't adopt.
Rod, just one second, please. Rod and I had discussed that maybe the board should be aware. Those, that, those locations are all stop signs within town road rights of way. For instance, Greenmount Shopping Plaza, Rutland Mall is not included in there.
Oh, those right in within?
Yeah.
These are, these are...
The houses are included, yeah.
We, we don't have jurisdiction for stop signs in there, and sheriffs and constables wouldn't be able to ticket someone for a motor vehicle violation, but stop signs isn't real clear, so they're intentionally not...
Greenmount Plaza's got several.
They, they got a bunch, yeah. I have a motion and a second on this, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed.
I guess I did have a question that I can ask, and I was a waiting period here, Joe?
No, there's not, there's special regulations and I'm not here. It's coming back to the news.
Okay, any other highway business?
Well, yeah, I have one.
Sure.
It's on the overweight permits. We're starting to get businesses applying for the nineteen ninety-five permits, and they're applying under the old forms, which are no longer being used by the state of Vermont, which means we now have to use the new forms, which we could do it earlier. To do that, you need to appoint a local official who would have the authority in the past. It took three or five board members to approve an overweight permit. Now, the way it's set up is you can appoint one person, either a member of the board, myself, Marshall Fish, anybody. And that person can issue a permit on the spot any day. There's no more two-week wait. Get it from you, then send it to the state. That one person will have the authority, and they can issue it right then and there. What I'd suggest is we continue to use the format we've been using, which tells everybody what they need to supply to the town. And we keep doing that. It says your hundred thousand dollars in personal property damage. What roads are you going to use, when you're going to be on them? As much information as possible. And, um, it's not in your packet now, but in the previous packet, I sent out all the roads that are posted for twenty-four thousand pounds. And if they're not twenty-four thousand, then they're as high as ninety-nine thousand. So you, you need to appoint someone to do that. I had Mr. Quirkin today who was asking also if buildings have a pending application, so we need to start issuing permits.
I think we all, for a lesson, discussed this before, and we just haven't formally adopted the process. And I think it's something we should do. And we were compliant with everyone else, everything you are for. It makes it much simpler, not only for our office, but for the people who are applying for the overload permit as well. So let's play for the board.
I would like to see Joe take it. Of course, that's doing a working hour, it should be, there'd be an assistant that's flexible to be able to take care of somebody on a special time, if you're on vacation or something, and you're on the spot.
Oh, yeah, you could, you could appoint a second or third person.
Yeah, just to take over, you know, if they don't come in from eight to four-thirty when you're here, or some special thing or something.
Yeah, you could also...
You could take a week's vacation and not be around, if you're on the spot.
You could appoint someone.
I, I, I would make a motion, we appoint Joe as the...
I think we have to have, if any question, Joe is mine, wherever it is, it shouldn't be brought before the board, if there's any question, his mind is brought before the board.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
It shouldn't be brought before the...
Certainly. When you do this, Joe, you have to check their insurance and the whole bit, right?
That's right, yeah.
Sure.
Just like...
He's got to go right through the whole process. What it's done is, it's left it local instead of statewide, I think, is what it's done. That's a good idea.
And any fines that would be issued would come back to the town, whereas, you know, now they don't, uh, all of them.
You'll know who's got, who is, if you're right before, there's alternatives.
Okay, that's, I have a motion by John Floyd.
Second, Gene.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. Any other highway business? Moving on, recreation, uh, Chair Box is not here, Charlie, she's an regional planning commission. David, regional planning commission, not here.
Uh, on David, sure. It's not regional planning, but he did ask that, I remind the board, that we've got a hearing set for, um, February twenty-seventh on the Zola. But he'd asked him that he could attend, specifically asked.
It's just a meeting, that's not a hearing.
It's not a hearing, but it's been advertised to the public, and you may get other people here.
Yeah, I got a meeting tonight.
We don't, it's a week from yesterday.
Monday night, I got a, I got a meeting that night.
Maybe you can be on the next one.
You didn't show it, be warmed up.
Yeah.
We waited until we confirmed John and Gene before we could take those.
Right. It's to be alternate Monday from a board meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure there's going to be many, many more than one, so...
Well, this is kind of an organization we, I would expect. Okay, Joe, you're next.
Just let me catch up to my...
Sure.
Uh, in your packet you saw there was a funding request from the BFW.
Yeah.
I wanted to remind you, in case you wanted to have...
I've forgotten what we've always done, so...
Yeah.
We've been giving seventy-five dollars.
You need a motion, huh?
Yes.
Make a motion that we give them the seventy-five dollars we've always given them.
Okay, we have a motion to give the BFW seventy-five dollars. That's for Loyalty Day, for eight. Loyalty Day for eight.
But I... Constable Dan just...
Right. Have a second to that? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Rod, you'll find in that big packet there, several liquor licenses underneath. There, it's that right there on top. Several of those. Multiple pages to be signed by board members. You might want to circulate those. Then also, underneath those, for just Rod to sign, there's two contract documents for the North End Sewer Line, some changes, administrative changes for you to approve. And while you're signing those, I'll just continue. I had talked to Tim outside about, just on, uh, remember on your packet about the fire hydrants, these are my smaller location, and, um, Tim would agree that a good spot's not in the swell where they're proposing to put it. So I'll get back to him and tell him that it's not acceptable location. Try to keep it closer to Route Seven than, than further on the hill. Rod, the only, the only other item I had here was Tony Floyd, the transfer station.
No, there's two, uh, there's two to sign.
There's two for each one.
Oh, there is, I'm sorry.
Uh, Tony had asked that I bring a few things to your attention regarding the transfer station, they're filling my air. First one is, he says there's a problem with the container boxes. You'll know, um, you remember, we bought container boxes that you can move to the apartments, make them three quarters or third. He says Al Nicky's have informed him they're not moving very easily, and they're not easily to reconfigure them. So, you know, I'd have to talk to the people at Solon Door if you wanted to pursue that. I don't know what else to do. I don't believe we got any instruction on the containers, on the roof, but everyone said it was pretty simple.
Yeah.
Evidently, Tony says they have a problem with the dividers.
Yeah, they had one the other day, it moved when they dumped it.
It moved?
I think so.
Well, broke it.
I don't think the pins were set bottom. I was at the transfer station about an hour and a half Saturday, it looked extremely busy.
Was it?
Yeah, a lot of inspections.
Two other minor matters up there is the swinging gates, you'll notice that when they open up there, they don't meet.
Right.
And so now Tony has to use a chain. He was hoping, I guess we'd have to reset those bolts or put longer gates on, but wanted to deal with the meat. Well, that must be, still have something put on a punchless for the spring.
Yeah. Might have to extend the hinges inward.
And the last thing was, he thought the floor and the office up there should be painted. And I don't know if that's in the requirement, but when they come back, I'll have to check. I don't feel like there was any.
I don't think there is. Paint it, but they might put a sealer on it.
Yeah, put a sealer, yeah. Paint it always.
They have a stain, latex type stain.
Did Jesus know? No, this is going Jesus, not the other one.
Okay.
Well, the last item I had, Rod, was just, um, the very last item in the green packet there, there's a new fireman application there.
There's a water house. Okay, accepted by the...
Mhm. I signed one of them, right?
Yeah. Has the other one come up, from Nicky's way?
Mhm. Yeah. Across from David's.
Rod, I did have one last item, I didn't realize. They came in awful, they came in late today, so you didn't have it in your packet. It's Greg Kepler's review of the various recycling proposals. Uh, he did his best job, but in the end, you still got some apples and oranges, but it's closer. He didn't, he didn't recommend one of the outfits, but what do you, pass it up. Basically, he's saying it looks like the Al Nicky's could be cheaper based on what they told us, but the Cessna proposal, as he points out, includes twenty-one different items, and they're only targeting, you know, just the minimal amount. And in fact, they're not even proposing to collect one of the mandated items that we have to collect it out by law. So their proposal's a little weak in that respect, but overall, there would be a dollar savings, it appears with them. But that doesn't, the letter speaks for itself, it doesn't include, for instance, Cessna would include administrative work. Let's say we have to take the homework and put out a newsletter. His, his office would do that as part of his feat. Under Al Nicky proposal, I would write that newsletter. I would spend dear time. We would go to Gerro's, we would pay for the printing, and we would do all that. So when you review those two bids, you, you need to keep in mind that they're not addressing some of the things Cessna put in its bid.
Okay, we'll review this and, uh...
And John Paul's not here, so I thought you could probably...
Yes, because I know he has...
And if one, and Greg said he would be available to come up, if he has questions based on that one.
If he should. Uh, this engineering for the North End Sewer Extension, you've got a number of places to be signed, and I guess I'm elected to do it, uh, if the board still allows.
Any part of the data that's started?
Uh, well, the spring, John, I'm still waiting for one final piece of paper at this point, just a minor thing from the city. In fact, I'm hoping that when I, you've got a document to sign tonight in relation to the North End Sewer Project. If you want to jump to that, Rod, I'll explain what that is. Very last item on the agenda, I think, at once.
Is that what this is?
Nope, it's another document in there.
Oh, that's the doc, that piece of paper you're talking about?
Well, no, it's, it's another piece of...
Quick plan D?
Yeah.
Okay.
As you know, part of this project in the town, we're going to do upwards of a hundred thousand dollars worth of work in the city, roughly, to separate their storm sewer, so we can plug that line, plummet into their storm. When we finish that work, they want to own the work that we have done in the city, and so if you sign that quick plan D, they would then own that work. I'm waiting for them to give me a agreement on what manhole we go into. My feeling is, hopefully, you know, I can deliver that tomorrow, and get what I've been waiting for for a couple of weeks. Once I have that in hand, that's...
I feel, if it's in the city, I feel the shit off.
Oh, yeah. They should, but I think, you know what I'm saying, I think we better...
Mark's... What's all the, what's going on?
Mark reviewed that and recommended you sign it today, and I asked him to do that, I figured you had this. I didn't want to hold this project up any longer.
Joe, on, on these, I don't find a signature area from myself.
That quick plan D doesn't mention anything beyond the city, right, Joe?
No, just what we're going to install. Just, you know, it's, it's basically piping and catch bases. We're separating out...
Well, it's exclusively inside the city, I don't see a problem with it.
From Paul's cleaners, south, I'm not sure how far.
Uh, when we, when we sign that quick plan D, let's make a motion, we agreed to sign the quick plan D for the piping that will be within the city limits. Want to do that?
Can't have it on record. It should be a motion anyway. We know how far they're going to, they're going to make us do that.
Yes.
Uh, yes, no, we've got that all documented. Oh, yeah. Was it five drains or something, Joe?
They reduced, I think, down to three, John.
Three?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we sign the quick plan D to the city of Rowland for the, the sewer line and storm drain work, it has to be done within the city limits. And we've got a word that's reached with two, to give it over to him, Joe. It's a head track, you can probably take care of that word, but just make sure you put within the city limits.
Okay, I have a motion, second, Gene. Discussion, anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed.
Oh, this is the problem?
Yeah. The rubber stamp? The quick plan D, we all signed this, by the way. And I believe it's just the one location, that's right, it is. Anything else, Joe?
Uh, no, unless any questions will be asked.
When we get there, we're, I'll let you know. This Agency of Transportation inspection...
Okay, that, that there is for the, again, that's the North End Sewer Line project, and that's for their inspector who will be present when we're working in Route Seven, because because we didn't, we didn't get his easement, we're going to be at Route Seven, and we'll have to pay to have a state inspector there during that time.
Okay, I'd like to sign this one, too.
To get Mark Sperry to review that, he said...
It's all been reviewed, guys.
Okay.
Okay, got to take care of that. All the liquor licenses back here? Kim?
Yeah, I got one thing.
Sure.
In a few weeks, months, whatever, we'll be switching over our dispatching to state police frequency, uh, higher frequency, their dispatch center. At that time, we will no longer need the facilities on Boardman Hill. However, we could use it in the county as a backup for our system. And I kind of thought it'd be well to get the board's permission to use it for such. That way, we don't lose the facility, and we could get it written up so that if we ever wanted it back at some point in the future, we could get it back. They would, the county would take over the cost of the telephone lines and all the other upkeep.
Yes, someone had mentioned that to me. I think it's a good idea, because that way, we would be retaining it also.
That's right.
I think that's a good idea.
Someday, we may need it here in town for some...
And I would have it written up that way, so if the fire department did need it, it's a... Someone talked to me on that, I don't know who.
I did, once.
Yeah, you probably did. Someone else did just a week or so ago, too, I think. But I had no problem with it, we're retaining the thing, and I like that idea.
Yeah, okay.
What's that?
No, we're not, we're just not going to...
No, we're just not going to do, really, we're not going to...
Who's, who's writing that up?
Uh, yeah, someone ought to write that up, it's...
I'll make it up.
Yeah. We'll, we'll make sure it gets written before we do it. I'll protect the county, just.
Right. It's a lot, we know you are.
That's it, Tim?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, Dick, go around.
Well, just to say that town report project complete, and, um, auditors coming in tomorrow night, so I'll label them, we'll get them into the mail Thursday. We got the advanced copy, and we honored Darcy Sharp this year. The hot lunch through the year, the personnel, kind of the unsung hero of the school system, but, uh, they put all the terrific lunches. They had a little get-together tonight, and, uh, she was kind of overwhelmed by it. She really appreciated it.
Certainly deserves a recognition.
Uh, that's, that's all I know. You were going to give us...
You are going to give us an estimated tax rate based on our best information we had.
Do you want that tonight?
If you gotta. People are, people are asking, and they're seeing other people's...
Without the, what you know and what you want to put the mall in for, I don't think I need to do that.
Well, this is just our best guesstimate. I mean, it's not anything firm, but...
Okay, I think I got it memorized. I didn't bring any kit for working. Rod and I had talked about what to do with the mall real estate and at first it looks like we'll put in at two-thirds as they prefer. But once that article came out in a paper, it will be behind schedule for Kmart.
So I understand that Kmart has done it. Somebody was telling me that's just about, Cassella told me that's just about wrapped right up, so it wasn't much. They were all set to go on that, so...
Well, we, we scaled back to, we feel maybe one half of the mall's real estate as it sits April one would go on the grant list this year along with the Red Lobster complete. And, and that's all. And you take that plus all the houses that are built and rooms and bedrooms and porches and so forth. I've taken into account what I feel is the figure for that. But then, um, we're about ready to, you know, for our attorney, refund the inventory tax appeal in nineteen ninety-four. And with that amount, uh, and also, um, borrowing money to, to take care of all of this. I hate to say it, I come up with a tax rate I feel is pretty darn close, five dollars and twenty cents a hundred for a thirty-eight percent increase over nineteen ninety-four. And I, I think that's the worst scenario. I mean, if other things delicious see that are out there, you know, maybe it'll, it'll bring it down, but...
Tax revenue passes.
Yeah.
How much was that double against five?
Five twenty. Yeah, that's, with all the budget passing, every article passing, um, that's what I, I come up and I double check a couple of times.
Did it have any, any heavier increases in the town budgets or something?
I think the school budget's up, uh...
Twelve percent?
Twelve percent. That's, that's almost five hundred thousand dollars, so... That's more than what the tax appeal refunds are going to be, so that's just give you an idea.
Afternoon.
Yeah, for that, I mean...
Well, the tuition, you know, I said...
The high school tuition is the cheapest thing that this town has.
No, but I mean, this year's, has jumped a hundred and sixty thousand. So they don't have any problem with it.
So what would it be, eight or nine hundred thousand dollars? You're, you're, where you're educating every high school kid in this town for eight or nine hundred thousand dollars, it costs you ten million dollars run a high school. So it's the cheapest thing we've got. We don't have any problems with the tuition. But a hundred and sixty thousand and five hundred thousand is a big difference there somewhere. Where's the rest of it? If it was a hundred and sixty for tuition?
Probably, right. You know, there's about seven different categories. I, I'm not up on how to explain it. It's gone out in the newsletter. But to look at the bright picture, even with thirty-eight percent, it, it would stagger any other town, but I think we're still, you know, under West Druck and Proctor, the city, Pittsburgh, so forth.
So you've got to remember, thirty-eight percent over nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah.
Which took a heck of a drop in ninety-three. Now comparing it to ninety-three...
It, it, yeah, if you look at it that way...
If you look at it that way, it'd be much less.
Well, I don't look at it any of those ways, but... All I can say is I told you so. Is there some way borrowing money as cheap as we borrow it, that we could borrow money over a period of time at low interest rates, the municipality borrows it for, and to lessen the burden on these poor people on, on the taxes that they will have to pay all of a sudden this one year? Yeah, we done, we, we split, we, we kind of divided the, the borrowing in half and do a half of the one year, half the next year. To, to do what, you know, you're suggesting is to help, help the situation look...
Anyway, that's, everybody, Dick said it's a worst-case scenario. We can hope that, you know, it turns out better and, uh...
You know, if, if the mall is more completed than what we think, I mean, you don't know until you get in there and it should be next month.
I think, I think we're real conservative on fifty percent. I think it's more than that, but... I don't know how much, you know, I mean, it looks complete on the outside. How much is actually done on the inside? We don't know. We still, you know, bare concrete walls and what? And that's, so that's the real estate part of it, the building. So we're just going to have to wait and see, but that's the absolute worst-case scenario. If, you have anything else?
No.
I'm sure Steve Howard's going to give us some good news on the state level in a couple of minutes here. Board to sign inspection agreement with State of Vermont.
It's already done, though.
Okay.
It'll suck.
Okay. Dog ordinance. We've had it in our possession now several weeks. It's a sixty-day adoption process and I think it's time to...
Everything's in order now, Rod. It's probably already on the agenda. I've got a summary ready to run in the newspaper in five days.
Are we actually have a public hearing?
No.
We don't?
No. Only have the tax, the residents petition for a...
Okay, what's your pleasure, fellas?
Hi, there's a lot of the roll right because handle control officer, I do it extend. But that would be...
Chair needs a motion, one way or another.
Uh-huh, make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Yep, you're set. Okay, I have a second for you. Yep. Have any discussion?
Not crazy about doing it, but I think we've had enough complaints in the last few years that I've been on the board. You know, dogs bothering people walking and running, things like that. We got to do something.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, just that I have to abstain because I'm an annual control officer.
Yep, same. Comments? Here we go, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, so we can have three to five members voting in the affirmative. Any no's, and we have one abstention, John Floyd. And we do sign this immediately?
Yep.
Charlie Brothers or something, but he'll come back. Dog's kept up all night to get ahold of you.
Oh, what's your name across the street again? It's a Menden dog and I tell you, we don't have...
And you got a hold of him and you got a hold of him?
Yeah, we don't have any control over that. That dog has been a problem. The last time I got a hold of her, which is kind of off my record, she said the reason why the dog was outdoors, I got into a skunk, but she couldn't stand the smell. But that is a Menden dog. It's on the Menden side.
You know the Menden constable?
Uh, it's still Ted. Uh, Ted, yeah, I know Ted. I've talked to Ted about it many times.
Um, got a letter, a letter from the auditor upon completion of their work. And we have some concern, they have some concerns here, which I think we can address a lot of the problems. And I think we all got a copy of this, didn't we?
What was it?
The, uh, letter from the auditors. We get one every year.
Oh, yeah, we get that. Where you got that?
So what I like, I think we should do is have, uh, with Kim or Joe forward to Kim, Marshall, uh, Karen, a copy of this because they're, they need inventories, um, they need a, a better procedure for turning over revenue that they collect at the pool or whatever. I know they've got a cash register. They purchased a bigger deal there.
Yeah, we'll see.
Better accountability on the funds they receive. And, uh, six assets. We have to have a listing of those. And a procedural manual for town employees. I would assume that this job description is something with that, isn't it?
Yeah, we've been discussing that for a while.
So, uh, you know, I think this should be forwarded to those particular departments. Dick, I don't know if this involves the office, which...
It's yours.
If you can deal with that. Yeah, we could, we could have a next meeting, but I think, you know, we, we have to address these. I think it's a good one.
Maybe Dick can answer them anyway.
Yeah, Dick really doesn't do audit his work. He turns his tax and figures over to them for their review and this is their summary.
Oh, here it is.
So, uh...
I, I think you should...
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, but I think we should make all the department have notice.
Before we do that?
Yeah, even before we break the rap, we just send this out in a cover letter explaining that they should deal with their concerns of the auditors immediately. I don't see a big problem with it. We've done it before. Okay, fellas, do that?
Yeah.
That's pretty much the agenda. Steve Howard is here. He has to come in to discuss the proposals that are being placed before the legislature regarding property tax reform. I think you ought to listen to him because if you had a tax shock a few minutes ago, you're about to get another one.
I hate to be a bearer of bad news, but we've got bad news. Okay, first of all, you can these out to you. This is an explanation, a brief summary of the property tax reform proposal. I apologize. I made copies of the printouts before I left this afternoon and I left the copies on the coat rack in the coatroom. So I have to leave these originals with you.
Well, you want me to make some pictures?
Yeah, why don't I read through this and then, unless you want to have a copy there, I can read through it and then maybe give you...
We got a copy of the leaf letter today, I think.
Yeah.
We got a lot of that stuff.
Why don't I hand this out and then I'll go through it and then after we can, let's see what you got. Let me start by saying that the property tax reform plan that appears to be sort of moving on a fast track to the House represents what I call cruel and unusual punishment. Basically, it's a plan that, from a statewide perspective, meets a obvious and desperate need. Taxpayers throughout the state can't pay their property taxes. And that's not a problem that I, uh, pretend doesn't exist. What I disagree with about this plan, and I'll explain it to you in just a few minutes, is that it really provides a significant disincentive for communities like ours that have been proactive in terms of encouraging economic development and job creation, um, in order to subsidize or reduce the burden of residential property taxes. Townspeople will no longer have reason to continue to be as aggressive as we've been. Clearly, the other aspect of this plan is, as I see it, does not reflect Vermonters ability to pay. In other words, the way the plan works, senior citizens and working people in Rutland Town who make the same as a senior citizen and a working person in Rutland City will be penalized as if they're wealthy because they live in a property wealthy town. The ability to pay is not reflected in where someone lives. And so there are senior citizens and working people in Rutland Town who are going to get a tax increase that they can't afford. This plan does not deal with the inequities that it will create between people with the same income in different towns. The other aspect that concerns me about this plan is that not only is it not based on your ability to pay for people on the lower end of the economic, uh, scale, but it actually rewards people equally on the higher end. People who earn and earn more and have a greater ability to pay taxes will get a benefit from this in some towns. So it is, as I said, we've tried to convince people on the Ways and Means Committee, an unfair way to solve an obvious problem. Nobody in Rutland Town would say that children in the Northeast Kingdom or in Rutland City or anywhere else should have less of education than children in Rutland Town. But clearly, there's a better way to do this than the proposal that the House is considering. Let me just go through it with you. There, at the beginning of the session, Ways and Means Committee received eight property tax reform proposals. Some of them were very promising. The problem that we have, the property tax proposal that I like the best is a property tax proposal that would allow communities to tax income versus taxing property for residents, residents. Allowing wealthier people to pay more and people who are working and senior citizens who may be retired to have a fairer break. And also to allow for some kind of buffer if suddenly somebody loses their job or they, they get a new job and pays them less, their tax rate would go down. Those plans were induced and unfortunately, the House believes that if they passed a plan that was based on your ability to pay, instead it would kill it. And because majority of the towns in the legislature are desperate for property tax reform, they've come up with, what they believe is a more pragmatic approach. Fortunately, we're going to pay dearly for it. Let me just go through, I'll read through the top sheet that I, that you have here. Once I explain how the plan works, basically, what the state is going to do, at least if this plan passes the House. And it may pass the Senate. The leadership in the House and the Senate have been meeting throughout the session. So I don't know whether the Senate leadership agrees with this plan or not. It's hard for me to tell. But, uh, basically, what this plan proposes to do is to meet fifty percent of the obligation for funding education statewide. And the way they want to do this is to raise sixty million dollars in general fund taxes, uh, which you'll see listed here on this sheet. And I'll get some copies for people who are back here. Uh, raise, keeping the sales tax at five percent, increasing the rooms and meals to nine, eliminating the sales tax exemption for ag purchases for non-farmers and charging a four-dollar-a-day auto rental fee for the first thirty days of a car rental. That raises about sixty million dollars in general fund taxes. And then the, the other, the sort of big source of additional revenue is a tax called guaranteed yield on communities that are able, this is, bear with me, because this is, took me a week to figure this out. To, communities that are able to raise a certain amount of money on their grant list. So what we have determined is for forty, if a town can raise forty-two cents for a hundred dollars per pupil at a tax rate of less than a penny... at a tax rate of less than a penny, so in other words, if you took a penny and you applied it to the grant list and you raised 42 cents before you reached a whole penny, then the state would take the remainder of that penny. They have to take a penny and divide it up, you know, to figure out what works. And what happens basically is that 93 towns in the state can have substantial property tax, substantial property tax base, and can raise 42 cents on less than a whole penny. So the state takes the remainder. It goes into what's called the full performance school trust fund. It's a trust fund that is separate from the state budget. None of the money goes into the general fund, so it would never be used to pay roads or pay salaries or remodel the state house or whatever it might be used for. It goes into a separate fund and it's governed by a board. Right now, it may be changed, but governed by a board, it's autonomous from the governor. So the governor can't cut funding for it, cannot add money to it. The legislature cannot add money to it, but there's no way that we can take money from it to balance the budget like we've done with the transportation fund over the last couple of years. Basically, what that means for Rutland Town, other than the higher property, higher statewide taxes, the sales tax and a lot of that stuff, is in the first year, using a statewide equalized grant list for education, they take our grant list and they multiply it by five or whatever the coefficient is to get it to a statewide equalized grant list. Rutland Town in the first year, if I get the right, and I'll get you a copy of this, I'm sorry, I forgot it. In the first year, right now, currently, the state figures on the equalized grant list, we have a tax rate for education of 86 cents per hundred. In the first year, that goes up 20 cents to $1.06 per hundred. And it's about, about $530,000 in revenue that's raised on Rutland Town's tax base that is sent to the state in order to balance communities that have a difficult time raising revenue. Let me just get the right number for you.
532-47.
Right, 532-497.
Which is the 14th highest contributing town of the 50 cities.
That continues to go up in the hours. So as you go up five years, you're going to have a higher tax rate. But the house of average value in Rutland Town, according to the state, is $122,422. Currently, in the first year, this plan calls for, says that a house of average value will actually get a tax cut of $20. The way that they figure that is because part of the plan is to offer a 50% homestead exemption. So you should be able to, under this plan, in every town, this is where I've gotten to the point where wealthy people will also get a benefit from this. 50% of your, the value of your house in two acres can be exempted from the property tax. With, unfortunate part is that the maximum exemption is $25,000. So it's really not accurate to say 50% a homestead exemption because there are very few houses in Rutland Town or in states that are valued at $50,000 or less. So there are, there are some residents in the community initially who will get some tax savings, very insignificant savings, but will get some tax savings because they'll be able to exempt the value of their home or $25,000 of their assessed value. In the five year, what's called step five, five years out, the tax rate goes from $1.06 to $1.10. Overall, a 24 cent tax increase over today, and we, Rutland Town would contribute to the state $704,538 with a new tax rate of $1.10 per hundred.
Question, Steve.
Uh huh.
First year is $530,000 plus.
Right.
Second year is how much? Third year is how much?
Oh, I don't know.
Stay at that figure, $530,000.
I think Dick doesn't give them extra.
Did he spell it out?
No, it just gives, well, gives the first year and the fifth year.
Yeah, that's all that we have.
There's got to be something in between. You don't pay $530,000.
Well, you've got $100,000, something like that, and it's going to be about three years.
Yeah, gradually goes up. Right, gradually goes up. I mean, it's always going to be increasing the amount they take.
Okay.
Okay, so in the fifth year, it shows that a house of average value in Rutland Town would have a $23 tax increase. The thing, the only thing that I can think to do, and I don't know how to do this because I pretty much made my opposition fairly clear throughout the whole process. And the only element that I can think to do at this point is to try to raise the cap on the exemption so that the residents in Rutland Town, who you were just speaking of, the people who don't have a lot of money, that you and I all know, live in Rutland Town just like they live in Rutland City, will be able to exempt more of their property from the property tax in order to maybe give them a greater savings. Just because I'm concerned about what consistently increasing property tax does to a resident.
They're going to try and push it through and vote for next year, I think.
Well, the speaker, who is fairly strict about going home early this year, set a deadline for tomorrow, having the bill out of our committee. It looks like we will have the bill out of our committee tomorrow, otherwise the Means Committee. And it should be on the floor, most appropriations committee, it should be on the floor on March 1st.
You had a committee vote.
We had one straw vote. There was this, what happened was that there was those eight plans that we had considered, and we took testimony on all eight of them and listened to them, and John Frieden from New Haven, who proposed H541 last year, came up with this as a compromise based on what he believed in discussions with the Senate and with both parties in the House would pass this year. He announced it on like Wednesday of last week. We took a straw vote on Thursday. The straw vote on Thursday was, which plan do you want to use as the foundation for the ultimate plan that will pass? I didn't vote for this plan. I voted for the governor's plan, Governor Dean's plan.
Which basically wouldn't have hurt us.
Right. I voted for it because it would help Rutland Town harmless. It would have cost us about $200,000 more because we would have to pay for teachers' retirement and current use, but that would have been it. That would have been it. But I think we could have gotten the teacher's retirement out of there, so it would cost us $4,000.
Yeah.
And so I voted for that with some reservation because of the teacher's, the teacher's retirement fund, but certainly much better than this proposal in town.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
Is this property tax reform or welfare reform? Because it looks to me like there's going to be a whole lot of towns on welfare and we're going to be the people paying the bill.
Let me tell you something. The working man is paying the bill for everything that goes on in this country today. And all it is, is doing it again right here. 228 towns, 205 of them will have a reduction, and 23, and you don't have to guess where Rutland Town stands in this one.
Yeah.
Will be paying again. I mean, you know, why work, I guess? Why work?
Well, that's exactly it. I've tried to ask.
Why did anybody come up with a sales tax where about 80% of the tax money they needed would have come from traveling people and not the local Vermonters themselves? And not her anyone, including the traveling people?
I made that suggestion.
Where, I have never heard where it came up anywhere. The most sensible way to help a Vermonter never came before the floor.
Never came before the committee?
Never came before anybody.
It never came formally before us, right?
There is the only way that this state, at this point in time, can afford to raise taxes on the Vermonters anymore. And it never came before the floor.
We've got 23 towns with property tax relief now. Why not leave those towns alone?
See, that's the, the argument that I've tried to make and the question that I've consistently asked when people have testified and supported this plan is, first of all, why are you punishing communities that have no problem at this point and trying to create a problem in those communities? Understandably, you're trying to solve your problem, but it doesn't get to the state anywhere when you're just shifting the problem to another community. And secondly, I've asked, and I've never, I haven't quite received an answer from anybody yet, but the question I've asked is, is it fair to ask a community that has made significant tax concessions to businesses and employers that provide the money for residents in Rutland City or North Fair and inner West Rutland, wherever they may be, to pay their taxes? People who work at GE don't all live in Rutland Town. Yet GE has significantly benefited from the sacrifices that Rutland Town has made, and no one has said, yet they think it's completely fair. They can't quite do that, but they don't answer the question. And then the other thing is, what's the implication for job creation?
Yes.
Totally destroying the incentive of the municipality to reach out to GE when they say, you know, we need tax rates on our equipment or.
Well, you have to ask yourself, is it better to be a giver or a receiver? It's much easier to be a receiver. What worse, what worse have we done here?
So this is not a, you know, I don't know what to tell you. The, I don't know what the Senate's going to do. I don't know how much this is going to change in the House. My suspicion is that it's not going to change very much. It's very difficult to argue, you know, it's very difficult to convince 200 something towns to vote against the plan where they win.
You've got 205 that are going to gain and 23 that are going to lose. How's your vote going to go? Real, it's like, you don't even have to have a straw vote. It's just realistic figures.
The smartest thing we can do is to try to change it and to try to get whatever in the bill we can to make it a little bit less painful.
I have no problem with raising revenues to offset costs that other communities have to bear that have a small tax base. I'm not at the expense of the communities that do not have a problem with the state. I'd be thankful that there are 23 towns that don't have a problem. You could have every town in the state of Vermont that they would have to come up with a solution for. Leave the 23 alone that don't have a problem.
So, I mean, that's, that's what the governor's plan essentially did, and that's why I supported his plan. The other two things I should make sure you know is that, and this is more concerning the school board, but you might hear this out there. The plan does fully fund the special ed formula, which is a huge tax burden for municipalities. That's a, that's a first. And that, again, is susceptible to, by the legislature or by the governor. And the second thing is it changes the current use program so that now what will happen is that no longer will you set your town, your tax rate for land that's in the current use program and then have the state send the difference between current use value and the value that you're, or the tax rate that you're charging in the county. Now what's going to happen is we're going to ask the communities to tax at current use flatly for the, for the properties that are in the current use program. It expanded the current use program to include more than just land, farmland and forest land, to also include farm buildings at 50% of their value. So if you're in the current use program and you're a farm, you're going to get a little bit more out of this program. Rutland Town has about $5,000, $4,000 in current use costs right now. And the way that there's, I haven't, this hasn't been clearly answered yet for me, but the way that they described paying for this is that they're just going to increase the amount of money in your state aid to education for, to supplement the loss in the current use program. I don't know what they're going to do for communities to pay in. I asked the question and I haven't, I haven't gotten the answer yet, but I'm going to try to get that hopefully soon. Maybe they're just going to send us a check for whatever the difference is between the current use value and they're going to continue to do it the way they do it now, the way they do it this year. And there's one more thing I would say. Oh, this does not include your municipal taxes. The municipal tax rate is set separately on your own grant list, whatever grant list you happen to use.
Steve, are you saying we're going to have to at least be two sets of books?
There are going to be, there are going to be two sets of books, but I don't think Rutland Town's going to have to have two sets of books. My understanding is that the state is going to have the equalized grant list. And so they're going to just take whatever grant list we use here for our municipal taxes and equalize it at 100% of fair market value. So that you're not going to have to do anything more than make sure that you send a check to, if they, if you, let's say, you know, I said, I asked the question at first and everyone thought this was hysterical, but I said, what happens if we don't send, you know, if we don't do this? They just don't participate, they say. Because there's also a whole bunch of other education quality things you have to do at the school. And they said that what they would do is withhold aid, all aid, so not just state aid to education, which wouldn't affect us because they don't have state aid to education, but they would withhold town highway aid and whatever that we would get.
We'll tell you the truth. They wouldn't give us that opportunity to run ourselves independently, forget all this garbage. We'd be so far ahead of game, it'd be pathetic.
I've asked.
I think you ought to go back there and tell them, fine, we agree with the whole thing.
We don't get $530,000 worth of aid for anything.
You talked about each year, towns out there are getting millions, million and a half dollars a year, aid to education. This town gets sat just about absolutely nothing, $4,000, $5,000. Who's been paying all along?
Right.
And now they come right back and kick you right in the teeth. They talk about keeping the younger generations here instead of moving away.
Yeah.
They not only can't work here anymore, they can't even live here anymore.
I think we've got a constitutional question here as, they had a tea party a few years ago when people were unfairly taxed. Come on again, you know? And I think, I think we've got a bunch of smart people.
What this is telling you, what this is telling you is, if you have a town, run it just as sloppy as you can run it. Because just as long as you run it sloppy, they'll give you all your need. But if you're going to break your back, you're going to pay it in. So they're encouraging you to run poor government. That's exactly what they're doing. If you run good government, you're crazy, you're being penalized. Does that make any sense to you?
It doesn't make any sense to me, and I've tried that, you know, I, what I really was hoping that we would do.
Why don't you brief me on this, this, this plan? You said the governor's plan. Brief me a moment on that.
The governor's plan, the governor's plan was set up somewhat differently. What the governor did was he kept the existing foundation formula that was set up in the eighties in the Cuban administration. And he increased the amount of money that was put into that funding system and redistributed some of the responsibilities so that property poor towns would just get more state aid. The way he raised the money was a minimum tax on communities that had a tax rate for education of less than 67 cents per hundred. Rutland Town at 86 cents would not be one of those towns. So the minimum tax, they wouldn't take any of our property tax or education. He raised, kept the sales tax at 5%. He raised, he raised, kept the sales tax at 5%. Oh, he eliminated, he moved the current use program and the teacher's retirement fund to the local level so that you could include it in your budget, which would drive up the, your need for state aid if you were a property poor town, but if you were a property wealthy, you would, you would then have to pay, if you weren't getting state aid, you would then have to pay for the current use program and the teacher's retirement program. That freed up about $18 million that he could use to reduce property taxes in property wealthy towns. I'm trying to think what else he had in there. The big thing was the minimum property tax, sales tax. It might have been something else that was, it might have been one more tax that I'm forgetting about, smaller tax. But basically, that's how he worked and what, what it did, and the printout showed, oh, I know what I'm missing. He had a 3% budget cap on school budget, that's what it was. So you couldn't raise your school budget more than 3% in a year. If you raised your school budget more than 3%, then you lost state aid.
The philosophy was that towns that got additional money normally spend it.
Right.
And spend more than actually what they should be spending. So you end up with budgets that are accelerating above the 3% level.
And he wanted to ensure that.
I agree to some degree with that.
So do I. And my sense is that, that his plan would have worked in the, at least temporarily, better than this plan. I don't think that this plan is going to be sustainable for a while, but you know, I don't think it'll be sustainable. I think what's going to happen is we'll see special ed get cut. And once we have a recession and our budget numbers start going down again, we'll start cutting again.
You've just taken more power weight in the local communities and that's a disaster.
I don't know if this is, I think it will pass the House. I don't know what will happen to the Senate.
It will continue to be more disastrous as the time goes on.
League of Cities and Towns is opposed to it.
Yeah.
They're trying to take their, I said, we're going to drop out if you keep telling me we're going to support this.
They're opposed to it. They sent us to fly and they were saying they were opposed to it. How much? How much noise did they make up there?
They did, they did a fairly aggressive job of trying to convince the Ways and Means Committee not to adopt it. You know, the problem is that they, the problem with League of Cities and Towns is that they are advocates for property tax reform and they never have a plan that they like. And so I think my, the thing that, I think the thing you have to do is if the state really wants to help reduce property taxes, that they need to raise taxes on the, on the state end of things.
The state wants to help to reduce property taxes, they have to mind their own business. And they'll take care of themselves locally.
Locally. Or the other thing is to allow communities, the thing that I really wanted people, the state to do this time, was to allow communities the power to levy other taxes so that if you were a community that, that had the ability to levy an income tax, if you were property poor but your income wealthy, like Norwich or Sherburne or Shelburne? Shelburne, Shelburne's by Brooklyn. If you're property poor but your income wealthy, you could tax income and then you wouldn't have a tax problem. If you had a strong retail sector, you could tax sales, you wouldn't have property tax problems. Or if you're going to do the statewide property tax, take money from Rutland Town on a property tax base, then allow Rutland Town to either tax income or sale so that they don't have to raise taxes for residents who can't afford to pay any more taxes. And the bottom line is, people don't understand that we pay your property taxes, it's just another tax that's added into the whole tax burden. People don't, you know, they just say pay taxes, they don't understand, they don't, when they're making out the check, they don't decipher between the difference, the difference between the income tax in the state and the property tax. It's just, I pay taxes. And it's unfortunate that a lot of Vermonters in property wealthy communities that are not wealthy people are going to be hit with the taxes.
But we're a very big giver and a very small receiver.
So I'm sorry not to have good news for you, but maybe.
Well, I'll tell you.
Maybe it'll change, but. No, we're going to try to change it, you know, I'm going to keep trying to make it a little bit less painful, but I don't know how successful we're going to be. I just want you to, you to know what's going on so you're not shocked at the end of the session. Well, we've been reading about it. This isn't good news at all. I have one more question for you, that's another, it's an unrelated issue, but I got, someone asked me today about the state taking over a road over by the Holiday Inn.
That's right. What's happening there?
They have it. We want, we want to take it off.
They're supposed to turn it over to us.
Okay, so is that, that's what the town wants?
Well, hell, wait, we want it only for one reason. I guess it was the only way we could get it maintained.
That's right.
They won't maintain it. They've got a road down there. It's a state road used by the town, and they won't maintain it.
The access road from the Holiday Inn.
So there you go again, we have to be Mr. Good Guys and say, well, then give us the road and we'll take care of it.
Okay, so it's just the issue that they won't maintain.
They will not maintain the road that's there. That road is the entrance to feral distributing.
Yes.
It's, what's that?
You requested to have it turned over.
Sure.
Okay, I'll make sure that the chairman understands the reason.
Right, now, we don't maintain the road that isn't ours, and they're not maintaining it, so it's being maintained privately by the users down there, that it's not fair at all.
They, they wanted us to maintain it.
The state wanted the town to.
And we have a pause, we don't maintain roads that aren't our roads.
I don't blame you.
For liability and many other reasons.
I'll make sure that the chair of the Transportation Committee understands that. He sort of sent me a note.
Because you're behind it.
I didn't realize that, I didn't know whether the town, I'd heard you discuss it, but I wasn't sure whether the town wanted it or not.
Well.
I'll check to make sure.
I think we explained to you why we didn't really want it, we sure didn't care if we owned it or not. It says it's the only way that the road is going to be maintained. There's entrances onto that road that have to be used by users.
Like barrels.
That's right.
Well, I'll tell them.
And there you go again, old Rutland Town is willing to do their part. Well, give us the road, we'll take care of it. And then they foot.
Won't do that again, will we?
For a whole year, huh?
Won't do that again, will we?
I want to tell you.
Well, if you think of something that, that, you know, you think might help, I'm trying to.
You, Governor.
Yeah, trying to find ways.
Go back and tell them to reduce spending and put it in the sales tax.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We've got one more item. We've got to let it be, Marcus Berry, we've got a couple of tax deals, and I think we should discuss this in the executive session. Do you agree the board will undertake a motion to enter executive session? I do, you can answer it. What's your pleasure?
You want to make a motion to go into the executive session?
Okay, go second. Okay, move to session. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll, we'll go to the executive session. That's the last item with anybody. Just wants to know, that's it.
We just couldn't take any more.
We had enough tonight. So let's, let's move into the.
I'll say it.